Thank you so much guys, we couldn't have done this tonight without you. And without further ado, oh Village Gamer, thank you so much for providing our live tweets for tonight. Everyone say hi and thank you to them. And without further ado, I bring you Lance Davis. See? There we go.
Thanks Whitney. And thanks everybody for coming out tonight. I'm very, very impressed with the turnout that we have here and I can say I think on behalf of everybody, much exceeded our expectations. I think in some regards that perhaps this is symptomatic of a few topics that we're gonna touch upon tonight. Obviously, our industry is very dynamic. We have a lot to offer to the economy of B.C. And there's been some very interesting events that have transpired within our industry here and also globally in the recent past. And I think for everyone in our community, it's touched us each and in a lot of different ways. I don't think it's necessarily a negative thing, but we'll get into that a little bit later on. What I'd like to do is just run you through what format is for this evening. Apologies for not providing you all with a steak dinner over the dinner hour, but we'll work on getting better sponsors in the future to share that. And I really sincerely hope that we have more events like this. Obviously, there is a need. The fact that you're here tonight and you turned out in droves, something's going on. And I wanna capture that industry, that energy. And I know it's important to Digi and its members, but especially to B.C. Interactive, I'll talk about that in a bit. That we get everyone's ideas and thoughts and we get your representations, please. The format for this evening is I will turn this over to Rick Griffiths, partner with Price Waterhouse Coopers. He's going to give you a general overview of the industry globally and within B.C. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the paradigm, malets, stuff that's been going on recently. And then introduce you to our panel. We have some great people up here tonight. Big depth of resource, a lot of knowledge, a lot of industry base. And I know that they have definitely some thoughts on things. They're happy to share with us. Allow us to have our interchange. I will ask them questions. I'll try to put them on the spot a little bit and try and incite a bit of constructive conversation. And then what we'd like to do after that, if you'll please hold your questions until then, then we're gonna bring the microphones out to you and allow you to ask those questions. And also, I understand that Village Gamer may have the opportunity to... We could have some questions by a tweet later up on the screen too, so that would be kind of fun as well, right? And I just wanna preface everything by saying, we want to end up on a very positive note and I think that we have a lot of really good stuff to be happy about and that we can plan for it too and that we can work constructively towards. The trick here tonight is to pull that out, highlight it, and then we can all aim for it collectively together. So without further ado, let me pass this over to Rick Griffiths, please.
Okay, I'm gonna try this without a mic. How does that sound?
Quiet.
Is that alright?
Alright.
Okay, brilliant. Okay, alright. This is live, don't forget it. Okay, so this is me. It said on the thing there that Rick Griffiths is gonna do a preamble, but I have a tendency to pre-ramble, so I...
Use the mic in the morning.
Is that what you said, you use the mic?
Yeah.
Here he's going.
So, ooh, can you turn it down a bit? So I got 10 minutes and I will try to stick to it, especially since we're behind. So I was asked to say a little bit about me and a little bit about B.C. Interactive, a little bit about Digi B.C. and then move on to some numbers that I hope won't bore the tears of death out of you. So I've been a partner with PWC throughout. The evolution of this industry since the sort of early 90s, mid 90s. It was called new media back then. We went through the dot-com era and then we went through the meltdown and now here we are. We've seen an enormous amount of change over the years. I've always been a big supporter and advocate of this industry and particularly as it melds together with the traditional media industries and all of the potential for that. So I was a founding member, I guess, and the only professional invited to take part in B.C. Interactive. Just so you know what that is, B.C. Interactive is an ad hoc group of industry people. It's not trade association, it's just a bunch of people that got together to fight a cause. The cause was that a lot of other places in the world seem to be helping this industry a bit more than we were as a region and that had to change if we were to be a bit more sustainable. So we fought hard, the indies, the big guys, the professionals. We did some economic impact work. We worked with B.C. Interactive folks. We went to Victoria, we pounded on doors until we got a tax credit. So just so you know, B.C. Interactive is not a formal organization. It's a bunch of industry people that came together around a cause and if there's another cause to come together on, then it will do the same again. And it needs all the help it can get. It isn't just an organization for big companies. There's lots of independent companies on there, Lance and the Swan Six guys and there's Sean Murch as he was at the time representing Next Level. So there's a lot of independence on that group. Digi B.C. is a bigger sort of umbrella organization. That is a trade organization. The idea there was that this, all of the digital media industries, whether it be visual effects, social media, video games, wireless health, I mean, there's all sorts of digital media companies that were not so unified. And so the idea was to create a trade organization that spoke for all of the digital media industries. And they are nascent industries, bigger industries, established industries, little guys, big guys. So, you know, I know there's some noise out there as to what it is and who it represents. I assure you, as a founding director, it's supposed to represent everybody. And so please don't judge it too harshly. It needs membership, it needs to be unified and it needs to be a strong voice for everybody in the province. So what I'm gonna do is quickly dive into some numbers. And I know I'm an accountant, I'm sorry. So what we do every year... Oh, it's really small, is it in focus? Okay, so what I do every year is I track the global trends around the key media industries. So we do this every year, but I pick 99, 2005, 2009, 2016 forecast. And the segments that we measure that I think are relevant to this audience are internet access, wired and mobile, internet advertising, TV, TV advertising, music, film, video games and newspapers and consumer magazine. The only point of putting this up is to show you the unbelievable growth and expansion of internet access, internet advertising and video games, particularly visually filmed entertainment. And I'm not gonna dwell on these numbers, but as you can see, if you look at the third and fourth line, TV subscriptions and advertising is just about 450 million, a billion? These are billions. And internet access alone is nearly 500 billion around the world or will be in 2016. And if you look at where it was in 1999, it was 27 billion. And if you look at TV in 1999, it was actually in 2005. You can see that the growth path of internet access around the world is absolutely mind-boggling. If you look at the growth of video games, we didn't even measure it in the 1999 survey because it was so small. That's come from nowhere really to be about as big as film and television. So that, I like this one because it sort of gives things context. TV is not going away. It's stubborn and it's sort of reinventing itself. I just wanna give you a couple of cuts on this, I don't know if this is gonna work. So this is more just on internet access, so wired versus wireless. And you can see that wireless is catching up with wired really quick. And wired is not going away, but wireless is catching up super quick. Another cut on video games globally. So these lines, you're not gonna be able to figure it out from there. But the top line, the darker line is console. The middle line is online. The third line down is wireless. So globally, what we're predicting is that in about 2016, online will be bigger than console and wireless is coming up quickly behind. There's another cut on that that I thought was interesting. In North America, this is the same chart but in North America, console is holding pretty steady lead over wireless and online. And so, but if you then switch to Asia, you get a completely different picture, right? Online has already overtaken console. It happened in 2000, apparently in June of 2009. And wireless is overtaking, is will overtake console within a year. So if you look at those two next to each other, that's what gives you that global result, which if you take the view that North America is gonna follow Asia, you can see what's gonna happen. And I just plotted this line just to prove, I added console and PC games together and then online and wireless games together. And you can see that online and wireless is gonna overtake console and PC sometime... Oh, it already did, June 2012. So we're done. So what's been happening in B.C.? There's a sort of a random selection of data that I just wanted to quickly show you. And I've done B.C., Quebec and Ontario just to give you the landscape. And lots of studies have been done, but they've never been done sort of consistently by the same organizations unfortunately. We've done some, Canadian Entertainment Software Association's done some. There's lots of various ones, so we've tried, I've just tried to pull out ones that are roughly comparable. And if you look at the total jobs in B.C., so the best one I think that we've got, 2011, Canadian Entertainment Software, total jobs in B.C. 3.8, Quebec 8.2, Ontario 2,600. Number of companies is remarkably similar, 83, 86 and 96. The console concentration in 2011 is sort of what you'd expect, although I thought Quebec looked a little low. 86% of the workforce is console-based here in B.C., 77 in Quebec and 62 in Ontario. If you look at the jobs data growth, the thing that, what I put in the box here is between 2007 and 2011, there was a complete flip between the percentage of people working in B.C. and in Quebec. So of the total population of jobs in the country, in 2007, B.C. had 52%, Quebec had 26%. And four years later, B.C. had 28% and Quebec had 53%. And I just, just so there's a little bit of bragging rights here. On the right-hand side, there was an approach to government when we were arguing for the tax credit to be equal effectively to some of the film tax credits that said if the B.C. Interactive industry didn't get tax credits, about similar to the film industry at that time, B.C. jobs could have grown, sorry, I'll say this again. If we got the same film credits, the B.C. Interactive industry could grow to 7,600 by 2013, 14. We didn't get the tax credits, they came in at 17.5%, which is considerably lower than the R's was. And look what happened, the jobs all went to Quebec. And so I think, I think B.C. Interactive tried really, really hard. They made the case, they warned of the consequences, they turned out to be right. And in many ways, you know, it will prove to be right. So at the bottom, the interesting thing is the company data numbers remain fairly consistent. So in B.C., in 1998, there were 41 companies creating 4,000 jobs. Sort of feels right, you know, Electronic Arts and so on and so forth. In 2011, there were 83 companies in B.C., double the number of companies, same amount of employment. And in 2013, I think Digi B.C. has predicted there'll be more than 90 video game companies, all generating about the same amount of employment. So it's not the number of companies that's the problem. So where is the video game industry relative to other industries in B.C.? GDP, for those of you that have no idea what it is, is the best way to look at it is net profit. It's not jobs, it's not contributions to tax, it's how much profit does this industry make? It's like a profit must account for the industry. So it's, so you can see that it's very small compared to some of the other traditional industries. In fact, it's minute compared to like mining and the retail trade. What's interesting is when you look at it by employee, it's actually very valuable. So if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, 171,000 per employee, that's right up there. I mean, I don't think we'll compete with oil and gas at 3 billion, 3 million per employee. But it's very, very attractive. It's a very attractive industry to have per capita. It's clean and it's valuable, right? It's highly educated and it contributes to the economy. Quickly, on a cross-country tour of tax credits, that's what we look like. B.C., Quebec, Ontario, Manitoba, Nova Scotia. I realize now I should have just put B.C., Quebec and Ontario. So we're at 17.5%, Quebec is at 37.5%, including some contract labor. We don't get any contract labor. Ontario's at 40 with 100% of contract labor. Plus, we have some interesting exclusions from the digital media tax credit. I'm sure some of you just bang your head against a brick wall over which is essentially, you can't get it on contract labor and you can't get it if you benefit from the venture capital program. So there's some frustration around that, as you can imagine, but that's where we sit. If that was a slide for the visual effects, digital animation industry, that number would be close to three times as big. So what have I noticed since the mid 90s, since I've been hanging around this industry? Well, number one is that the big guys built this industry, but they're really severely under pressure right now. The small and the medium-sized companies have grown really significantly and the landscape is diversified as is evidenced by tonight's attendance. The complementary, as I call complementary industries, have grown very strongly alongside the visual effects, the social media, the digital animation industries. All experienced really fantastic growth as well. So there's a bit, and I swear I guess where the Digi B.C. argument comes in, that all of those somewhat complementary skill-based industries have grown roughly about the same rate. We still seem to have a sort of grow and sell sort of mentality. There aren't many companies that wanna grow and get bigger and bigger and bigger. Typically, we'll grow to a certain size and then sell to, you know, Facebook or Zing or whatever. Venture capital is really pretty skinny. There's managed capital obviously in town now Paul Lee's fund, but there's really no venture capital that truly supporting this industry. However, the angel network is actually pretty strong and pretty robust. Seeing a lot of companies grow through angel investing. I would say that there hasn't really been a united voice in the industry or if it has, it's been too slow. I don't think this industry has mobilized enough politically and hasn't got its point across policymakers. I don't think the politicians have done a very good job of championing this industry. It's been a long time since I heard a speech about how wonderful this industry is and how great and how lucky we are as a province to have it and how much it's an industry of the future. So to sum up, this is my last but one slide, Lance. Pretty obvious, we're now in a era of global domination of the internet. And it's pretty obvious that all entertainment and media is either digitized now or it's going that way. It's pretty obvious that the console business is maturing, if not, it has matured. The mobile and social business is exploding and overtaking it. I think the stats sort of support that. What's really interesting, again, this audience I'm sure will be evidence of that, is a small can get big really quickly. It's low barrier of entry, high tolerance to failure and a high-growth phase curve on every business opportunity. It could become big very, very quickly. B.C. is no longer number one. We may have over-invested in high-cost structures in the console business. There's poor political championing and not very competitive economics. And we are a vibrant community of world-class talent that maybe bring in a knife to a gunfight. So the challenge, Lance, are we at the end of the beginning or... So I just wanna close by saying, I'm actually incredibly proud of this industry. I've watched it from right at the beginning. I've watched it go through its evolution and it's an industry that's grown and evolved pretty much without anybody else's help. But it's different now. There is digital talent all over the world and the location of talent in a particular location such as Vancouver or B.C. is no longer as compelling a distinctive advantage as it once was. There's lower cost structures that need to be vital now in decision-making and they're especially vital to the bigger studios. Companies will and are going anywhere. Governments really, really want this industry. But we've come from nowhere to become a world-class player. We spawned a vibrant ecosystem with nobody else's help. But the ecosystem is creaking and we may be losing our edge. But we are in the entertainment and media industry's sweetest spot. I thought of another spot that began with G, but I didn't put it in. So are we happy and if we're not, what are we gonna do about it?
Thanks, Rick, for a very salient presentation. Creaking, yeah, I would agree with that. But I think that we're adopting to some newfound opportunities and it's throwing some curves at us and some are gonna prevail and some are gonna get hurt and some may not make it. But if things weren't changing, then we'd be either standing still or going backwards. And I don't think that's the case. If I'm not mistaken, I believe that the industry, we saw numbers up there globally for 2009. I think the latest numbers for 2011 were $56 billion, so continued growth. And then for this year, I believe 8% is forecasted growth. So what that tells me, 8% on $56 billion is a lot of Big Macs. I think that there's some more work to be had out there. It's just that we have to focus on what it is and capture it before it goes by us. But again, our questions are gonna need to hopefully find out how we can do that. I'd like to invite our panel now to head up to the table and take their seats if you might. And I have a couple of very short slides, if you could just click them up there for me. Rick has already done this one. We'll talk a bit about tax credits and I think that they are very germane to us, but too many people see them as a gift and a handout and a giveaway and a bad spend of taxpayers' money. And I humbly submit that that comes out of naivety and a little bit of propaganda. And I'll speak to that a little bit later on too, through our question period for the panel. If we could have the next slide, please. Just no differences between B.C. and Quebec, Ontario, I think that's fairly straightforward. I'm sorry, this one is small. What we're talking here is about something called CAGR and I'm gonna count two, so I'm sorry to use these anagrams, but it's compound annual growth rate. And I can simplify this slide for you very easily and that is, it's growing and it's growing steadily. It isn't gonna stop, okay? Regardless of what happens here at B.C., it's not gonna stop. So let's try and make it happen here in B.C., that's why I put that up there. Okay, we've lost our ranking. We were the prevailing hub in Canada for the longest time. Some fantastic things achieved, a lot of jobs, a lot of GDP to the province and some of it's going away. What I find kind of amusing is if you step back and go quite macro, equalization payments happen here in Canada. B.C. has a have problem, so arguably give some money to Quebec as a have-not and they take the money and come out here and recruit our people and go to work there. I don't know about you, but that pisses me off. So we've lost 1,300 jobs. We know the stories. Bad stories sell more newspapers, quite simply. So if Radical closes down and moves or if propaganda is down, it shows up as Disney leaves town. Well, bullshit, okay? They're still doing business here arguably in a different fashion and some of us work for them in different capacities and that can continue to happen. But I think in many respects, the bad news is much overstated. It just sells better, simply. We can't deny the fact that it is happening however. Howard Donaldson said that, I think he estimated, we've lost 3,800 jobs, which you can only imagine the GDP on that. And again, I won't baffle you with numbers, but the average salary in our industry in B.C. is $79,000, which eclipses something like forestry. It's a valuable industry. You take that $79,000 and multiply it by 2.16 and 3,800 jobs, that's how much B.C. has lost. This is why politicians and everybody else who supports our industry should simply pay attention because we matter and we have a very serious impact on the economy. We do have more studios. I'm really pleased about the transition and the introduction of so many micro-studios. When a big one closes or they downsize, our people would like to stay here. Granted, it's getting more difficult to do so, but they find themselves keeping busy and they get very creative. One thing about our industry is you can slam us, but you can't kill us. It will manifest in another way somewhere down the road, something else. We've now moved very significantly into the realm of social and mobile gaming here in Vancouver and I'm super excited about that. It's affecting us right in our studio, it's not six games, but I can't tell you anything like that. The average salaries are declining and that is not a good trend. Simply put, if your man-month cost is $10,000 in Quebec, it's $6,000. So go and compete on a project with those people underbidding on the same project. What can we do about that? And it's not as simple as just get a bigger tax credit, give me the money and don't ask questions and we'll spend, you know, we'll do it properly, I promise you. It's not as simple as that. So without further ado, I'm gonna ask a few questions of our erudite panel. We're really pleased to have them here tonight. I think they represent a good cross-section of our industry. And let's have a little bit of fun with this. What I want you all to keep in mind out there is we ask them these questions and we have a little bit of banter back and forth. How does that impact you? I hope it incites some questions from you because we really, really do want to hear from you at the end of this. So I'm going to invite each of you to introduce yourselves, if you could keep it short, simple and sweet. And let's start with you, Brenda, please.
Because I couldn't have done that, sorry, should have tried. I'm Brenda Veli-Gershkovitz and I'm the CEO, which is kind of a funny title given that we're a seven-person studio. But I'm the person organizing a seven-person studio called Silicon Sisters Interactive. And we're a new studio in town, we started in 2010. And essentially, the focus of our studio is to build high-quality product for women and girls. And we're playing with the concept of, does the game change when all design decisions are made from a female perspective? And if so, how? We're trying to really work with the emerging game players to build really innovative games that aren't just iterative but are something entirely new.
Thank you. My name is John Lutz. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Labels at Electronic Arts. So that covers EA Sports, EA Games, BioWare, Maxus, PopCap and Allplay. I've been in the industry for about 15 years, the last six of which have been in Vancouver and I love working and living here.
Hi everyone, my name is Kenny Wong and I'm the CEO of Blueback Games. We started our studio about a year ago, we just had our birthday actually in July. We recently gone through the Grow Lab program and our team is the result of the mothership at EA. Us escaping it and we play in the same. We overturn one day. And we, our focus is on social and mobile, especially that we're tackling the social gaming engine platform problem.
Hi, I'm Matt Tony, I run a company here down in Gaston called Zeros to Heroes that a few of you might know. And I'm also the guy behind the Can We Do It campaign, which is really talking about a lot of stuff that Rick and Lance have talked about tonight. How do we do something to kind of like take back our status as world-class center? Because frankly, Rick, those numbers are disgusting. Like I was looking at those things and it's terrible what's happened here in the past few years. So the fact we've slipped so much even in Canada, so I think that we could do more about if we wanna keep these jobs here in the city. So that's kind of my shtick right now, so just forget it, we can make that happen on political level.
I'm Julian Ng, I'm the whipping boy or better known as CEO or founder of Eruptive Games. We're a social mobile company. We've been in business for about three years now. Originally from San Francisco, moved operations up here to Vancouver. And there's a reason that we did that, because we really believe in the economy here, we believe in the city here and we wanna support that. And I think that's what this panel's about.
So I'm very glad I represented a cross-section. Myself, I've been involved in the video game industry for far too long in this town. I started to feel very much like a grandpa, but going on 20 years. And I've worked with five different major members of the community. And it's my privilege and I wanna continue to work here as well. I actually think that, and I hope you share this with me, we do have the ingredients for possibly a perfect storm. It's just that we have to kind of percolate them a little bit. And as I said, I really wanna take advantage of some opportunities I see coming on the horizon and I think everyone here has that possibility as well. Before we go too much farther and for the benefit of myself and our panel, an informal, let me just campaign, how many people here are directly or indirectly involved in the development of video games? Thank you. Great. See, it's the right size. We're in the right room. And just out of curiosity, members of the political community, provincial or municipal? Don't be so shy, Brian. There they are, thank you very much. Good, good. And members of the press? Thank you, Village Games, yeah, thank you. Thank you much for coming. Victor, we love you. You've done fantastic things for the industry.
I love Vancouver!
Who doesn't? What about there? So let me throw some questions at you guys, all right? And the first thing is, yes, there's been a lot in the press recently, and in the most recent past, and some of it not so pretty. But let's bring it down to a more personal level for you within your individual studios and your endeavors. Let me throw this out to you. How has it impacted you positively or negatively, particularly within the last year or so? Not at all? Okay.
I'll share that a recent hire for us mentioned that, when she shared with her friends at least that she was moving to Vancouver to work in the video game industry, it was pointed out to her that that seemed like a ridiculous decision. And I found that really sad. You know, there's still so much opportunity here, and such wonderful studios to work with, and so much going on. The fact that there's this impression that that's somehow a backwards decision, I think it's really unfortunate.
Try and find out where that comes from, too, okay?
But at the same time, in addition to running my company, I also lecture at the Center for Digital Media here, and I've taught at Seattle, and I've taught at Vancouver Film School. And when I see former students of mine, there's a lot of them, on the street nowadays, what happens is, they're no longer telling me the good news stories about the exciting stuff they're doing here in town. More and more of them are talking about, well, I'm going to Montreal, here's my iPhone 4 phone number, or I'm going to Seattle, or Europe. So that kind of brain drain's kind of deeply troubling, because these are the people that we're trying to bring up as an intern and develop with the next generation. But without those opportunities here, and I'm starting to see these people leave, they're not coming back anytime soon, because it's kind of getting between its legs.
Very good point. Not just going to talk about regenerating the hub and getting back into our first place if we possibly can. Let's maintain, first of all, and stem the bleeding that seems to be happening.
So, yeah, all joking aside, I think the mothership does have an important role to play in Vancouver. And what's been sad for me to witness over the last five years, we probably lost about 20% of our jobs right here in Vancouver. We used to have a glorious downtown office as well as our campus out in Burnaby. Now, this week, we closed the downtown office, and we're only at Kansington, Burnaby. And from where I sit in my role, I have, you know, a unique insight into what's driving some of the decisions that are moving jobs out of Vancouver into other places at EA. I think Rick really hit the nail on the head. When he said that, you know, the talent in our industry is everywhere now. It's not as specialized as it used to be, and there are a lot of colleges around the world pumping out graduates that have all the right skills. And so when we decide where we're gonna start a new game at EA, we look at, obviously, the leadership talent. We look at the bench strength of the local talent, the community, technology, the location. But more and more, the cost is becoming a bigger and bigger factor in terms of where we put game development. And I've seen new projects started in Montreal, in Orlando, and in Austin, that another day would have all started right here. So that's what I've witnessed.
I definitely think this is a deeper rooted problem at the moment. I mean, I represent the social and mobile industry. And as you probably know, it's probably the darling industry right now. It's getting so much momentum coming up the coast, coming up from the Valley. And with the new structures of companies moving into the Seattle area, right? And what's going on in Quebec right now, they're drawing a lot of talent towards those locations. For my company, we've always been looking for talent, all the time, constantly. And I don't know if you see this at EA, but for us, we can't find it. We want it, we just can't find it. And from the people that we've talked to, I just had lunch with Matt the other day, and it's, a lot of these people are heading south, and they're heading east. And I think the deeper the problem here is, it's, we have to build a culture here in Vancouver. And we have to make it attractive for people to wanna work here, to wanna stay here. When they graduate here, we want them to stay. We don't want them to look towards east or look towards south to get a job. And I think it's beyond the money at this point. I think it's about the culture of what we represent in Vancouver.
That's a very good point. I think it is more than just money. And gentrification of Vancouver now is a common expensive city. San Francisco is inexpensive, thrives. You made a very good comment earlier tonight, Julian. When you go to San Francisco, it feels like you're sticking your fist in a light socket. The energy is there, right? They've got a culture, something's going on here. And I would argue that we had something similar here at one time, it just seems to have died off a bit, so we can regenerate this. I've actually heard that in Quebec, the tax credit program has been so successful that in the three to five years that it's taken for them to take number one spot, they've exhausted all of their workforce. They have to come here and outside of their problems to find people. So proof positive, the tax credit programs do work, and they're waiting for it. Because you'll hear sometimes in the press, no names mentioned, but prevailing politicians, saying it's a race to the bottom, and they're silly for giving away their money. And that's a very clipped argument. We'll talk a little bit more about tax credits. Let's just drill down a little bit more, if we could possibly go micro. What are the primary issues? Job losses, of course, are affecting us. Julian, you alluded to the fact that it's getting tough to find talent now. People are leaving town, so you can't just simply make a posting and expect someone to answer it right away. Are you able to get investments? Is the bad P R actually hurting you? Has it impacted any of you, actually? Do you see that?
So I'll start with that. And coming from the perspective of us, which is a very small startup, and with only seven people right now, plus one intern, what I found is that we put some job postings out, and there seems to be, and we were, we put all the intern position up, because, you know, we're a small company. And the types of people that were applying, we had the fresh grads, of course, applying for that, which is what you expect. But we also had very industry veterans, like eight-year veterans applying for intern positions. And when that happens, it's almost an insult, and it seems like there's something wrong with our ecosystem here. So that's the one thing that, it's odd to me that we're not able to find that in-between type of talent. The other thing is, coming from a startup perspective, and the lack of capital for our industry, like what Lance was saying earlier about the only B C in town is an edge, it is really lacking for, especially for us small type of startups. And so, I know you guys said angel investing in Vancouver is pretty robust, but from my perspective, I've seen a lot of startups that just, you know, we go and we try to raise funds, and it's tough, it's still tough out there in Vancouver. And for us, definitely, we don't have, you know, the tax credits might help and everything, but we don't have a year. Like, for us, we were, you know, three months over dead, everything, right? So up until very recently, we were on the brink of death. So for me, it's a...
I think that happens to all of us, Ken.
Oh, I know, I know. Yeah, every day was like survival for us, right? Until very recently, so, yeah.
Well, as Kenny said, I think I have to really confirm that. You know, when I started, and I've launched several tech companies over my career, as a startup, and I'll just come out and say it, the B C market, it's very hard to raise capital in this industry here in B C. Unless you're a mining company, and there's a one-in-a-million shot at hitting the big jackpot, it's hard getting investors to invest in a new tech startup. Could you imagine having a, started a company called Facebook up here, and hit up 200 doors, and everyone said no? That would have been pretty fun to have a, you know? And that's the case. For me, drumming up investment, capital investment, it all came from the Valley. And I was sort of mad about this the other day, where I think maybe what we need to do beyond the tax incentive programs is to have the government look at how they can incentivize entrepreneurs to actually start seeking talent. Not just talent for labor, but also foreign investors that come into B C to invest in technology companies. Because, look, it's, they're investment adverse here for tech companies. And whether you wanna admit that or not, it's true. And for me to have to go to the Valley to raise capital and funding, it should be happening here to a certain degree. And we need to start, you know, supporting that, and maybe the government can help.
Well, I mean, no question. I mean, again, Rick, if you've got these angel investors out there, I'd like to meet them, because it's, you know, we have a hard time raising our money, and every startup has their problems as well. We'll just come back and talk about tax credits. We look at Ontario really much wrong, and think that's the solution. I think sometimes there's a policy that you think this, you know, one-size-fits-all approach is gonna solve the problems. But, you know, I think that's just not true for our industry. I think these perceived and angel capital almost supersede this tax credit stuff. Because, you know, Kenny said it, couldn't have said it better myself. We're dead in three months, we're dead in six months. Like, that tax credit stuff might help us later on if we make it. You know, I think if we sweat pants and toss anything, one-size doesn't fit all, it's not a good look. Okay, so we need to have solutions for it for every phase of our ecosystem. Because if we're gonna talk about an ecosystem, we need to talk about things that make it work, and that's capital. That lets people develop their ideas, and hire their friends, and make good companies that stay here, right? And if that just doesn't happen right now, we're kind of a below-the-line mentality, we need to change that.
Very good point. Television shows and films, and not so much today, but at one time, music most certainly had no problem attracting investment. Here we are, a $56 billion industry, and money won't touch us. What's wrong with that? Why is that? Some would say it's because we don't own our I P and our project for hire and stuff. But I would say that if there's an influx of enough capital into this industry, nothing better comes out of it than a ton of original I P. And there's a screaming cry for content still. Original I P is much needed. We've gotta find a way to make it, right? It's very cool. Good segue into the next question, and I kind of forgot one of my campaign questions. How many people here have ever worked directly or indirectly for EA? Hello? Okay, so the role of the core members of our community, kind of important, I think. I'm gonna touch lightly, I wanna tread very carefully here, because I'm on a knife blade. Some would say that there's a little bit of a dichotomy in our local industry right now. And some of you may have seen some signs of it, just a simple thing like planning tonight's event. We wanna get all members of the development community here. B C Interactive is screaming to get members of the social and mobile space to come and join us. We need to hear their voice. So what we've done is, we've gone to their doors, knocked on them, and met them. And they now understand the import of joining us and a unified voice. But for a while, they were, the tirade that was coming back, where some people were a little upset, was, well, you guys are console-based, you're big old dinosaurs, you're card group members, you're longstanding members, and you're going away, so see ya, because we're busy. And it's not as simple as that. We're all in the same boat one way or another, and we're all changing our paradigms. What we see today for social and mobile, I can guarantee you is gonna be completely different in six to 12 months. Won't even take that long. And of course, console space is changing, too. The import of the core group. Who's teaching at the digital center? Probably someone from EA or a large firm. When you have a social and mobile company and you need an artist or a programmer, you don't just open your door and walk out the street. You're probably picking someone up from a legacy company who's had experience with the legacy company. So I think the role of the core group and the longstanding members is pretty much understated, right? But it's very evident. So then, this question. Is it practical to work towards a unified representative body, voice for all members of our hub? Let me talk to something else. Does everyone here know the difference between B C T I A, Digi B C, and B C I? I don't. I think that's been somewhat contributory. Rick did a very good job, I think, eloquently explaining. Digi B C is a lot of things to a lot of different members. They have Price Waterhouse, Talus, and some very blue chip members of the technology community here in B C on their boards and membership. B C I is specifically geared towards the video game development community, and it's a loosely structured alliance. It's a volunteer body. We all got together because we cared so much, we found the time to get into a room, and then make a unified lobby to the government, meet the members of the prevailing government, pitch to them, and get the digital tax credit, which hopefully we can all hear benefit from. But would you agree that it's best if we can all have a unified voice? Is there room for that? Does the dichotomy have to be there, or is it maybe not? It's not there, maybe, it's my imagination.
Oh, it's there. Yeah, so for myself, when I first worked in the industry, I was working with a company that was doing work for our projects, P S P V and D S, and then moved into the space of self-publishing. So I've kind of really traveled in both of those realms. And what I've noticed is that people in the core industry often view folks working in mobile and social as, or casual in particular, as somewhat less than, you know? That they're not as talented, and perhaps not as, those aren't real games, you know? You know all the stuff I'm talking about? And also the perspective that you've said, Lance, that people in the core games are seen as dinosaurs. I actually think that Vancouver is uniquely placed, and one of our great benefits actually in this city is that there's so much back and forth now between those sectors. I'm seeing that more and more. People from the core space are getting involved in, you know, all realms. And I think that's, I actually see that as one of our major competitive assets, because there is so much talent. And the more that we break down those kind of ridiculously false barriers that we've created, the richer the experience will be for the user, in my opinion. And when you see things like some local properties coming out that are sort of mid-casual or mid-core, whatever you wanna call them now, you know, that's a real strength that Vancouver can tap on, because, you know, we've just got a great talent base here. And not all cities that are really focused on social and mobile have the core base that we have. So to me, I see that as a tremendous advantage for us, and some pretty ridiculous lines we gotta get rid of.
Very nicely put, thanks, Rick.
Yeah, just to add to that, I think, you know, when I think about question lines, I think about the things that are common between folks that work at EA, folks that work at the startup companies in Vancouver. Ultimately, I think I can safely say, pretty much all of us love to live here, that's why we're here. Pretty much all of us are passionate about video games, myself included, and that's why we're here. That rings true whether you're at EA or whether you're at a two-person startup. I mean, we all have that in common. So, you know, for me, thinking about this from the perspective of the mothership, you know, I'm incented to try and continue to grow EA in Vancouver, to try and continue to help the industry grow in Vancouver, because as Fred had pointed out, we all hire off each other, but one pool of talent. And I think what we really need to do, to Lance's point, is begin to unify our voice back to government, begin to find the right allies in the government that get it, and identify those folks, formulate a strategy as a team, and really, you know, set the wheels in motion. Maybe we can start with, do we have a vision for our industry? You know, trying to get some of these common big questions that we need to answer out, and then having one unified voice to go and represent us. And I think tonight is absolutely fantastic, it was great to be here.
Thanks for that, Jonathan. As I mentioned earlier on, I think this is very simple, everyone here cares very much, and wanted to hear what was going on tonight. And I hope that this is a precursor to yet further Town Hall meetings, where we can continue to delve exactly into that theme, unification and presentation.
So I can't say any better than John, as far as the unified body. But what I do notice about Vancouver and some of the community that's built around Vancouver in terms of gaming, is that there is a vibrant social and casual mobile gaming community in Vancouver. And this is sprung out of some of the independent game studios in Vancouver. There's guys like D G A, it's like gaming, it's like the gaming companies up here. And it's, it really is a bit different from what I've experienced back when I was back at EA. An old dinosaur as well, coming from the side. And I think that's something more of a grassroots movement. And, yeah, I think if we can get to the level of collaboration and sharing, because the reality is, we're not, we're sort of competitors with each other, but there's a lot of collaboration that can go on as well, in terms of knowledge sharing and creating that more vibrant community that can go towards that unified body.
Well, I think more importantly, I mean, this whole dinosaurs versus mammals debate is, you know, kind of lost on me, to be honest with you. I think what's more important is if we set the ground rules and conditions that will benefit the industry writ large, we're all gonna do better by that. I mean, I think it's astounding that we've had these incredible flips in our national prestige in terms of the total number of jobs that are done in Quebec inverting in the space of a very short time. If that was happening in Quebec, or if that was happening here in B C for another industry, there would be like blood in the streets. But somehow, it's just been accepted that that's kind of okay for us to kind of go, wait, no, I'm not sure why that is. And I think that the fact that we're all here tonight means that people are concerned, wanna do something differently about that. And I think that that's more important to me, is if we start talking with those conditions that make that ecosystem function. You can't have it function without capital. You can't have it function without places like Electronic Arts and their anchor companies, right? And you can't have it function without entrepreneurs, like guys that wanna stick their neck out and, you know, try to make something new. So all these things help all of us. So whether it's a big company, a small company, mobile company, as Lance said, in a couple years' time, it's gonna be something entirely different anyway. But if we don't put the right conditions in place at the grassroots to make these things all function, it's kind of an empty arc. In a few years' time, we'll all be having this meeting in Montreal, right? In a few years' time, we'll all be having this meeting in Montreal, right?
Wait. So, let me stick my neck out a little bit, Farhan, that's my job. I know it's not all about tax credits, there are other things that can be done correctly. I very much like the idea of creating a regime, a community where investors can come in and feel comfortable about doing it, because I don't think it's in place right now. And interestingly, we've had many conversations, we being BCI, various members of the sitting government, but that part hasn't come up, it's always been about the credits. So I think we can bring that into the agenda, most definitely. And it helps us to the extent that we can represent that that's what you people want as well, I can't emphasize that enough. I do want to talk about tax credits, not just because I'm a number cruncher, but here's the deal, and I got to preface this by saying it's just my opinion, all right? Having talked to these people and sat with maybe eight to ten different members of the caucus, trying to lobby for their support, we just talked in very simple terms, what about tax credits? We did ask the thirty-five percent, got half of that. Worse, it was then offset, you couldn't have shred and that, so you give up ten points to get seventeen and a half, you can see the delta there. And our friends over at Price Waterhouse, we asked them, we campaigned, could you kindly please conduct a little bit of an analytical on this? And the net benefit was determined to come up to on average about five point five percent. That was the prevailing government's answer to how we might compete with Quebec and Ontario. So, why didn't they leap on it, and why aren't they responding to us now? As you say, oh, blood in the streets, man. And they're not. In fact, I read with great disdain these three quotes from people that I sat and talked to and looked in the eye, and they said it's a race to the bottom, it's a stupid thing to do, and Quebec and Ontario shouldn't be doing it. And it tells me that they're A, either naive, or B, afraid. And so, I think the reason that we're getting a deaf ear, that was a term used in a letter to the editor about ten days ago, two weeks ago, is because they are very much afraid. They are tapped. For those who do have read the headlines over the last couple of days, the price of natural gas has come down, I think we're faced with another deeper positive billion dollars more in debt in the province, they haven't got a nickel to give us. And although it might make sense to do it on paper, and I'll tell you about that in a minute, just the perceptual problem alone scares them away from adapting and doing it. So we have to cooperate with them and collaborate with them. And what I was alluding to there was, the BC Interactive was invited by the prevailing government to present to a tax panel specifically appointed by them. And we did, we made our case, and we said, this is why it needs to be a bigger credit. We're not like some of the other members of the community, the business community, who have longstanding, very large credits. We want it for a very short period of time, establish our hub, reestablish it, take it away, we'll take it from there. And the GDP to the province will be more than comfortable. They told us to go away, but to come back and answer a specific question for them, and that was, at what point would the rate be cost neutral to the province? So we thought, huh, we sunk the hook, they're biting. And again, went back to our good friends at Price Waterhouse, and crunched some more numbers for us, and guess what came up? Forty percent cost the province nothing. So they decided not to do it. And again, why did they not do it? Because now it's standard, it's right there in black and white, it works, because they're afraid. We have a government that's on bended knee, we don't know who's going to get in in the next term, and they're broke. So, we couldn't be pitching at a worse time. It's a good program, it's the wrong time. We have to consider that. That doesn't stop us from continuing to pitch, and in fact, we've been invited to come back yet again, because now there's a whole new set of players. Thankful for Mike Dejean, is the new finance minister, he's not quite as discreet conservative as his predecessor. And he's asked us to speak to him, so we'll do that. Just to give you a little bit of promise, won't say that anything positive is going to come from it immediately, but that's how we continue to try. And I like the idea, as I said, investment, let's get some rules there. Okay, so how do we rebuild our public image? Because we can't just expect others to do it for us. Do you guys have any constructive thoughts on that? That's a toughie, I realize.
Well, I agree with what Kenny said earlier. I think it comes down to, it's not really a competition out there. Are you talking about just camaraderie in the industry, or how we work together in the gaming industry?
Yeah, mitigating any divisiveness that might be out there, and I agree, probably it wasn't there, it's a perceptual thing, but also presenting a unified.
Yeah. I think what's really good about Vancouver is, the mothership isn't the common enemy here, and it never was. I think it's really about, and I said this before, it's about reestablishing a culture that has been lost, I would say, a long time ago, and we just got to reestablish that culture again. Working together, and you know, you've heard this proverbial message before, but coming from the ground level, I mean, I've talked to other gaming companies, it's very rare. I think, when you go down to San Francisco, and I hate to break the valley, but they do have a common enemy out there, they call them Zynga. Zynga. Yeah, everyone talks badly about Zynga and so forth. But at the end of the day, they learn from Zynga, and they learn from each other, and they really, there's just no barrier between sharing information and sharing growth. And we need to do this, because it's almost like we work in separate rooms, in separate industries, when we really are working together towards making Vancouver a much more, you know, vibrant gaming industry. And look, there's a little bit of changing of guard right now between console legacy and social and mobile. And whether you like it or not, you all have to embrace it, John. But at the end of the day, I mean, even EA is going, moving to the social space, and we all are. And I think this is where we need to share information. And you know, what's funny was, just before it started, John was talking to me about, you know, monetization and how it all works in the social space, and I said to John, absolutely, we should all talk about this. And this is just the beginning of getting two people in a room that has expertise from both sides and really starting to talk about it. And I think that's the first step towards creating some sort of culture back into the city that's been missing it.
Let me add to that too. I thought it was interesting, I've attended a few social game forums in Heart America over the last year or two. I sat on a finance forum in Ontario two Januaries ago, and that was an interesting conversation, really fascinating to watch that hub too, as it was, the energy was just beginning to compound there, take off. And when the question came to me, I said, I am very, very thankful to Zynga and Facebook. You've just brought two hundred million more gamers to the community. So in my mind, the pie got bigger, because we were, the question had come to me as, so console space is going and dying and gone, and oh my god, all this news stuff. So, we're not jumping off of one horse and going onto another one in the other direction. The pie got bigger. And I humbly submit that right now, what we're experiencing, it did get bigger that period of time ago. Now what's happening is the segment configuration within the bigger pie, that's what's fluid right now. And that's what we're all adapting to, and why we have to be so agile. Would you guys agree with that?
Yeah, no, I think you're dead right. I mean, industry's getting bigger, there's more games being consumed by different people. Things have changed, and it's not the same as it was a few years ago, we have to adapt to that, of course. But I think, you know, I was looking at various numbers at the beginning, you saw those trend lines moving up into the left. But if you look at kind of our share of that, here, locally, kind of flat line here going down, that's the real problem is, you know. You said that Montreal's tapped out their talent, and they have to go here to buy talent and whatnot. That's our challenge. So if you want to talk about like, is there a perception of Vancouver being suddenly on the downside? I don't think that's the case outside of Vancouver yet, right? I think that we have a chance to kind of put things back in place, to kind of start to celebrate some new successors and talk about the exact things that are happening here. But we don't have an infinite amount of time on that. We've got twelve to eighteen months, I think, tops, right? To really start to turn things around. So I think that's our collective challenge, is how do we put these things in place and actually get people in governments, maddening to me that you couldn't even get an audience on this stuff. You actually have the numbers in the proof that kind of makes, you know, that shows, it makes difference, it shows it's a good investment. And you know, I'll tell you, if people are afraid, they should not be doing what they're doing, right? This is an industry that needs investment in the future, people in this room need people to get behind them, because we're dealing in innovation, we're dealing in risk, right? And that takes guts, and that takes not being afraid. So, I don't think people in this room are afraid, people in government shouldn't be afraid either.
So, just to add to that, you know, one of the other things I think we can do, so I was involved with BC Interactive from the start, have made multiple trips over to Victoria, to bureaucrats, politicians, and there's a ton of stuff that's been going on behind the scenes for almost five years now, that led to us getting that seventy-one and a half percent tax credit, and you know, we continue to work, as Lance pointed out, to try and get that increased. But, I mean, the first to say, I don't think we've done a very good job communicating in an effective manner what BCI has been doing for the industry, and updating the wider industry at large as to what the hell's going on. So, you know, as I said before, I think tonight is a great first step. I think one of the things BCI could do is have some kind of newsletter that folks can sign up for, where we actually, you know, on a bi-weekly or monthly basis, update everyone as to what's happening, and we have forum for folks to submit questions, comments, and just kind of pull back the curtain a little bit, from this core group of, the core group really is only about five or six people, who've been driving all this from the beginning, and you know, now we, it's clear that we're gaining critical mass, and I think we need to bring everyone into that, and help us speak with a much louder unified voice. I think there's a lot more we could do in that area, we'll definitely look at that.
Absolutely, totally agree. And again, I think it's another reason why these good people are in these seats, Don. And I'll point out, there is a table back here, and you'll see the lovely Chelsea at that table, that is representative of BCI, and you can ask questions and also get an information sheet on BCI. I implore all of you, please reach out to BCI, and there's contact information in there, ask what we do, and ask how you contribute.
Okay, if I could just add another thought to the question, what can we do? I think that, my impression is that we're not that great at telling our story as well. You know, with a scrappy little startup, I've been rabidly pursuing any opportunity for press, and they're out there. And it's been helpful in a couple ways. One, I can actually, you know, track game sales related to it, I can tell you that the HuffPost blog that I did in July brought in about fifteen grand for me, in terms of game sales. So it matters in terms of, you know, small scrappy studios really don't have big marketing budgets. But I think perhaps more importantly than that, and thinking more globally than just our studio, there's been a real change in how the general public perceives video games. I think most of us are probably aware of that, and there's some really interesting ESA data on this, where parents who have received video games as a negative, that's changed in the last few years, and I think that's a really important point. And the more that we can do in terms of, you know, jumping onto opportunities to get public attention and talk about, you know, the positive side of gaming, and the great experiences the kids have, and, you know, really tuning our own minds a bit better than we do, I think that's something that we should all be trying to do, and it benefits in lots of ways, and Victor wants to speak to that.
I really think it's important, you know, like, I cover games every day, and I've seen this discussion all the way along, since the very beginning of Electric Playground in nineteen ninety-seven. I think there is too much emphasis in the video game community, I think there's, I think there's too much emphasis in the video game community to talk about it as a technical craft, as something that is about a lot of numbers, frankly, and that's what we're seeing tonight. And I think that it's time, and certainly that's what we've been trying to do with the Canadian Video Game Awards, to celebrate video games as art. End of story. And every brand, every single project that you guys work on, whatever platform you deliver it to, should be construed as art, and talked about as art. The general public doesn't want to hear about your labor problems. We don't want to hear about competition across this country. We want this country to feel proud of the cultural output that we have, that the world consumes. And those significant numbers, those are, that's interesting data, you know, that's something that Canadians across the country should be proud of. But I, you know, I really implore everybody that's making video games right now to take a second and to recognize how other artists talk about their art, and the video game community needs to talk about its art in exactly the same way. Every character, every story, every game mechanic, this is stuff that needs to get out there, and you need to have cultural kind of pride around that. And you know, if you want to point to a success story in Canada right now, you have to look at Toronto, not Montreal. I mean, really what's equitable here is that the console market is shifting, and Ubisoft is making a lot of money, so they're spending a lot of money, and THQ and Square and other studios are making, they're having some hits, so they're spending money where it's cheapest for them. But, you know, console audiences, we all know, is kind of shifting to other things, so that's why there's all of these social things starting to pop up right now. But you can kind of see, you can track where the big dollar spending is going to be. I think it's important to look at Toronto, which really didn't have a lot of this tax credit stuff, and I don't mean to, you know, disparage or dismiss this idea that tax credits are going to be beneficial to Vancouver. Toronto built an industry basically out of nothing. I used to travel there, and we'd have nothing to talk about as a video game show. We'd go, and there'd be nobody to interview. And now there's tons of people. And all of those people started as little indies, all about their passionate little projects, they all work together, they have exactly what you're discussing there, a community where they get together and they collaborate and they share, and they work on each other's projects. Sound Shapes was a recent one that came out of Toronto, and it features a lot of work from a bunch of studios all collaborating. And I agree, that kind of stuff has to happen out of Vancouver. But I think the first thing that has to happen out of everybody that's making video games, you've got to be damn proud of what you do. And I hope all of you are. And you need to tell that to people in a very clear way, that you make art, and you contribute artistically to this country, in a cultural way. It's not just about money, it's not just about a staff, it's not just about labor, it's not just about tax rates. You contribute culturally to this country and to the world with the work that you do. And very few people get to do that, and you should be damn proud of that. And that's what I do, that's my job, is to cover you guys, and to put you in as big of a platform as I can, and celebrate the art that you built, not the number of employees you have.
Thanks, Jake. Really, really. Thank you all. So evangelize, we'd be very, very proud of what we do. I think, I recall, and I'm very old, but when something nice, like GRI announces in Vancouver, I believe it was a one inch by one inch little column in the paper. And why wasn't that evangelized? Why wasn't, there's some marketing going on there, right? Some good PR. I think a lost opportunity for them and for the rest of us. We need more of those good stories, right?
Yeah, I was going to just add to what you were just saying there. Even for us, our PR agency's out of San Francisco, and when we do a PR blitz, it's towards the US. You know, and I think to add to that value is that, let's take ownership too, is that I think media companies in Canada have to start, you know, promoting Canadian companies. And how many startups are here in this room right now? New startups. Even new startups, you guys, you know, something called social media, and we talk about it, we use it, we should really use it, because you need traction, and we do this for eruptive. And, you know, we make the same mistakes, when we do a PR blitz, we do it in the US. But, you know, just facing this discussion alone, I think we're going to start doing it in Canada as well. And I think we all need to do that, and media needs to cooperate and really help support Canadian industry and gaming.
Good point. Well, media needs content too, so let's give it to them, right?
Lance?
All right, good for you. So that's something very, very constructive, and I think there's a few more constructive things we can take away here tonight as well. Yes?
I would just like to answer that. Not many of you people here know this, but Village Gamer is the only one hundred percent Canadian content digital media news site in this country.
Awesome. Yeah, cool. Very, very cool. I think there's a lot of opportunities we can capitalize on, and I alluded to earlier in the evening that I think that if we play this properly, we have the ingredients for a perfect storm. We have fantastic talent, money's a little quiet, no shortage of ideas. I think we can lasso the press and get their attention. The politicians, yeah, not so much. We'll deal with them as they come along, I think. But the trick is, yeah, to get those ingredients for the perfect storm and to ride that wave a bit, huh? So, one last question for the panel, and then what we'll do is we'll take the microphones out to you guys, okay, for a bit of unity. And I'd like to invite you guys now to look into your crystal ball, and just assuming that we do play this thing properly. What does the landscape look like going forward? And I'll just toss a little tidbit out there, I think that those two hundred million new gamers that came into the space a few short years ago are looking for more sophisticated a few short years ago are looking for more sophisticated content. They're learning up and they're becoming more sophisticated gamers. They want robust product. They want deeper content. And I think some people who may have been mired into the traditional console space are just as agile and able to adapt to that requirement as the startups might be. Do you think that's true? Can we capture that?
So I think that's definitely true. I actually see the quality rising, you can definitely see it in social games and casual games. There's no question about that. And I actually see a sort of convergence between the console and, you know, the social and casual space, kind of, yeah, converging a bit. And so there's that, what Brenda was saying earlier about that mid-low quality games, that's where I think the spot is, and that's where, you know, somebody like Electronic Arts will tackle. And that's where the startups is also able to tackle. But it's a bit of a challenge. And I actually see some publishers, there's a need for publishers in this industry that's going to become more prevalent in the upcoming years. Because the low barrier to entry that we're talking about, as far as mobile games, that is not low anymore. If you try to launch a game on the mobile and try to compete with, trying to get on the list and try to, you need a pretty big marketing budget. So I see, like, the mothership and, you know, the publishers will start to, you know, yeah, get into the space good more.
So just to assuage any fears, EA is definitely in the mobile space, in the social space, and in the play for free space in a big way. And, you know, the way I see things playing out over the next few years, I think we're going to see mobile and tablets continue to grow exponentially. I think we're going to see much more gaming content on those platforms. I actually think social is probably peaking a little bit right now. I'm seeing some of that with the recent Zynga results as well. But in terms of just the common thread across everything, whether it's console, PC, tablet, Facebook, I think the common thread is the move to play for free. And I think that's happening everywhere, and it's rapidly accelerating. And so when I think about, you know, the future and, you know, conversations that I'm involved with at EA right now, that's definitely a big part of what we're thinking about.
You can hear that, Julian?
You know, maybe one of the ones that should answer this as well is that Ruptive Games, we're a mid-core social gaming company. We've done mid-core since the very beginning, and we've never steered away from that, from that market. There's a lot of talk about that right now, about how mid-core is the new flagship of gaming coming up because it's a niche market. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter whether you're in casual or you're in social, whether you're hardcore or mid-core, it's just about innovating the products that you make. And taking games to the next generation, whether it be in console or social or mobile. And I think, you know, working together and developing new technologies and developing new innovative gaming mechanics and playability is really the future. Kenny's right, sustainability because of acquisition costs are rocketing right now. And it's extremely expensive, which makes a very big market barrier of getting in. And you'll notice that in the last three years, when in social, and you're right, it is peaking, in social, lots of companies came to the space, and now you're doing it, it's down to like a handful. You know, you have Zynga's doing acquisitions. You have EA's doing acquisitions in that space. Mobile's going to follow the same suit. And you'll see that coming up. Because when you move to the freemium model, you're talking about higher acquisition costs. So yeah, publishers have to take place. EA probably might look at that model one of these days, I'm not sure. But I think if we innovate our products and really design games for what it should be, to be fun, and to have audiences really enjoy what you make, you know, proverbially, it's like saying, build it and they'll come. And that's what we're really after.
Totally agree. Okay, we've done too much yapping up here. And I sense that you guys do have some questions for us, I sincerely hope so. And what I'd like to do then is throw it back to you in the audience. And we have Carly with the microphone. If you have your questions, please put your hand up. And if I may ask, just introduce yourself very briefly and present your question for us.
Okay, my name is Thomas Kirdren. I'm a game director with Slant, success with Slant. So the, we heard here a lot about the, tonight, about sort of soft stuff. It's, I'm a little bit hurt saying that we don't take pride in what we do. I've done hundreds of interviews over the years in the games side in Vancouver. It's the, maybe you didn't hear about them, but I think I'm totally unique. I think all of us are dummy. And just to start a little bit of background on my own, I came here because lots of my friends have come to Vancouver and they pulled me over to work with the mothership. It's the, and right now, the situation is exactly the reverse. Like, I have so many recruiters on my path. It's all my friends in Toronto and Montreal. Oh, why aren't you there? Come on, move over. What the hell are you still doing there? It's the I am hardly unique. I'm sure this is reality for a lot of people in this world right now. The cost of living is skyrocketing here, as Lance said. The average wage is going down. So I heard a lot of the talk about the soft things we can do, but I'm sort of more interested in the hard things. Because I agree with Matt, we have twelve to eighteen months, so we're having this meeting in Montreal. I absolutely think he's right. Only place of advice, since I don't like just say from the ball and say, I don't contribute myself, is that when I look at my home country, Finland, which is arguably even more expensive place to develop video games, our companies, Remedy and Robio, which are both immensely successful, one thing that is common to them, they both own their own IP. Max Payne, which they sold back to Rockstar, they own Angry Birds, the biggest franchise in video gaming, they own Alan Way, Death Rally. And that's even for, it would be cheap for them to move out. Maybe Robio, of course, they're patron. But I'd like to hear about the panel, things are practical solutions. Of course, as Lance said, it doesn't seem like we're going to get a tax credit. So what can we do?
Well, I think if I can just answer that, because I mean, I started thinking this when, you know, Julian was finishing his last point. And I've had other discussions with people at the CFP and other places. And I think it always comes back to the idea of like, having sufficient capital so you can develop your own products, your own ideas, and create your own IP in partnership with investors. Because if you're working below the line, working with someone else, you're making a product for the world for hire, you don't own any of that. You know, you have to go from client to client. You never build anything that's yours. Once you can build something that has your stamp on it, your creativity, your innovation, then you're actually in a very different ballgame. So the only way to do that, though, is go and raise capital, this kind of low-level seed, angel-like tier. And that's something I think we need to fix, those problems. Again, Julian and I were going to brainstorm yesterday about ways to do that. And I think there are mechanisms that are open to us that don't involve a tax code regime shift. I mean, I'm not saying we don't do the tax code regime shift. What I'm saying is, that doesn't put the money in the hands of the innovators, right? And it's like what Kenny was saying earlier, we don't need tax credits. I mean, what we need is startup. So I think that's the way we get at the idea of capitalizing on IP and owning our own innovations and benefiting from them. And that comes back to Lance's point about our perception in the world.
Good point. I don't think those two strategies are mutually exclusive. I think they can happen together.
And can I just add quickly to that, Lance? I do just want to mention also the Canadian media fund, which, you know, certainly isn't a panacea and a blanket solution. But it is a great opportunity to own your own IP and get some funding at the door. So probably everyone is familiar with it, I won't go on with it too much. But there is somebody here from telephone, if you want to speak to her, so. Do you want to put your hand? Yeah.
Hello. Okay, hi, I'm Joe Robbins. I'm from Unity Technologies. I'm kind of new to the PC, kind of, video screen. I've actually only been here for about, I've been on four hours now. But yeah, I just wanted to kind of reinforce and kind of echo the concept of community. My job at Unity is a community evangelist. And community is something, at least within Unity, that's been kind of crucial in our success as a company. If it wasn't for the community surrounding the product, it wouldn't have got where it is today. And that kind of thing is echoed beyond that. Inasmuch as building a community within a specific geographic area is incredibly important, and the whole philosophy of sharing and, you know, having some kind of common pride in the area you figure from is crucial. And I've seen this all around the world, from Japan to Scandinavia to London. It's crucial to have, so I'd recommend doing it. And also, I'd just like to mention as well, tomorrow, there's going to be a Unity user group meeting in Vancouver as well. See if you use Unity. I'll make you know, look it up.
Up near the front here, your car's leaving the intersection there.
Hi, my name's Heather. I'm a member of BCI, the CEO of Exploding Barrel Games. I think you guys have done amazing job on the panel, Lance and Noah, love you. And I think you speak really well for independent studios here in Vancouver. And do you want to clarify a few things that were said that don't represent us? Because I think it's important. We're a mobile social company. We've been around for two and a half years. We're profitable. We're growing. We will continue to. The console industry's been awesome to us. So John, thank you. And thank you, Stefan, and everyone else in the console industry. I don't want, the worst thing I can think of for people here in Vancouver who are in the social mobile industry is to think that people who are making console games think they're lesser because we have seen nothing but the opposite. So I just want to make that clear. For all you guys making browser games and mobile games, you're loved. Because that irritated me because we have been so, so, so supported over the past two and a half years. The other thing I'd like to comment on is, obviously, the tax credits continue to be an issue. Continue to be an issue for all of us. Continue to be an issue for companies like Brew, that's Slant, Trixie's, or Rockstar, who's been such good work for BCI, and Lance. They're also independent, so you gotta stick with your homies, right? Oh, you're laughing. Because I'm crazy. I like you too. I think the thing that I want to be clear on, like, we're a fully owned bootstrap, nobody gave a shit kind of company. Like, we did the Sand Hill Road march, and we didn't want to take the friggin' loan, shark loan. And we knew what taking money from the BC government would do to a long tail on our company, and I think that's unfair. So for all you guys that took that grant, you should get the credits. But I don't want anyone in this room to think that whining is okay, and that you should be entitled to anything because you can make it happen yourself. And I don't want you to think that you're operating at a deficit, because that's not how I feel. The CEO of one of the companies that has the best success on the console market today, right here, Stephen Russell. That is a story. That is a PR story for Vancouver, where console gaming is dying and these guys are making money. That is a story. They're supporting us. That's all I got.
All right, this morning up near the front too, when you get a chance, okay? We've got about fifteen more minutes perhaps. All right, I'm sorry we're keeping you so long, and I know it's a bit hot. And thank you all for sitting here over the dinner hour. Very, very much appreciate it.
I'm going to be controversial and ask a question.
Thank you.
My name is James Shaw. I'm from National Council. Mr. Jonathan, that's giving me live down here today. Thank you very much. My question is, because I come from a part of the world where we've kind of lost this battle, we've been number two to the US, or perhaps number three to Japan, and we still haven't found the rating, and I live up over here. So the question is, what have we learned from countries like the UK who have already lost this battle, trying to claw back into it? What concrete steps can we take in learning from those countries to make the most of these twelve waiting months? I've heard a lot here about starving artists and, you know, cultural commitment. That's not a plan. Let's actually have a plan. If you were launching a game, you'd put a launch schedule in place. So what can we learn? What are we going to do to put it into a plan?
Anyone on the panel?
Well, it's all up to me, right? If I had kind of, you know, decision-making power of this kind, I think what we should do is, you know, make, we talked about this yesterday, I'd make forty, twenty-five thousand dollar bets in small companies like Kenny's probably was a year ago, and help those people get their games out the door and into market and help them test their ideas. And if thirty-six out of those forty bets failed, that'd be okay, right? Except if four of them succeeded, I think that's what starts to create this culture of success that we've been talking about. So it's not big bets, it's not giant tax regime changes. It's finding ways to help the people that are starting out get that first shot, because it's damn hard up here. Like Julian was saying, his startup was in, he started in the Valley, it's easier there. I started in New York, it's way easier there. You're starting a company in Vancouver, you have big brass months, because this is a tough market, so you've got to make that a little bit easier for people.
Actually, I'm so that actually just stole my idea. So I don't know if most of you, if any of you have heard, Montreal is actually starting an incubator that's going to take in strictly video game companies, video game startups. And I'm actually selected as part of their list of mentors. And that, to me, is something that's very, very concrete and very, very innovative. In that, we're not talking about, you know, we went through the Grow Lab accelerator as a startup, but Grow Lab accelerator is not concentrating on video games. So if anyone, but that comes down, comes down to the capital again, right? But if we can put in something like what Matt is saying, like an incubator accelerator kind of thing, where we're taking little bets, the entrepreneurs that, you know, indie guys that are trying to make their next hit, then I think that's where it ties into that grassroots movement again, and that whole culture thing and the other thing, right?
Well, going back originally to your question about what happened in the UK and what we can resolve here, I'd just say legalize gambling. I'm joking. But really, going back to it, it's about, once again, opening the lines of communication. If there's startups out there that are looking for investors, come talk to me. I know a lot of guys in Silicon Valley, but we don't talk. And I think this is the first step, is to actually communicate with each other. We always look at each other as competitors when really we should be working together. Crowdsourcing, crowdfunding, that's kind of hot in the US right now. And maybe we should start moving towards that and getting governments to actually legislate the right policies to allow us to do that.
Hello, my name's Spencer Chandler. I'm the MLA for this area, Vancouver, West Vancouver, and EDV Credit for Culture and Gaming. So I'm just here to hear the discussion. I think one thing that I would say first off, though, is that this came about me being here because I reached out this way, as opposed to the gaming industry reaching in towards me to say, hey, we want an advocate, we want to talk to you. And I think I talked to eighty-four other MLAs, and for the most part, that would be the same story for them, that they haven't heard from the gaming industry. We hear from fisheries, we hear from forestry, I get a Hunting and Logging magazine, I get wildlife, you know, everybody's sending me stuff, you know, the magazine subscriptions I get, unasked for. I know republics, accountants, everybody except the gaming industry. So many of my constituents work in the field. I think it's important. I guess what I would like to say is that if we're going to turn things around in twelve to sixteen months, we actually, not just a minister, or not just a few people who are the heads of government, or think they're the heads of government, need to hear from you, but it's all MLAs. Because we all talk, we all work together in some form or another. And I like a lot of these ideas. I want to take them forward. But if it's just me coming forward to my colleagues, then people on the government side saying, hey, this is a great idea, and they never actually hear from a constituent saying, we like this too. I think that's where deaf ears start to come in pretty quickly, so.
Do you hear from the other entertainment sectors? Do you hear?
I hear from film, and I hear from the nonprofit arts and culture sector quite a bit. But in terms of gaming, the conversation has been Matt Toner and Diggy DC. I just met with Howard last week. But that was the first meeting. And that was because I reached out. And I really think we need to have the industry reach out too. And I really appreciate this for them. I hope to come to many more. Not in Montreal.
Thanks, guys. And speaking of the BCI, I can certainly say that we'd be happy to present to you and share with you our thoughts and ideas. We do have good presentation, unbiased. But anything that you want to know and more, we're ready to present to you.
Hello, I'm real excited here. My name is Wesley Brucen, and I'm actually a labor market analyst for federal government, so I'm like two eyes of the company. I have some statistical live questions. I'm just trying to get a sense about the job losses. It was mentioned that about thirty-eight hundred digital media jobs were lost to other provinces, and another fourteen hundred jobs have been lost to downsizing and closures. And I know, like, I track a lot of the layoffs that are going on in the lower mainland specifically. And I know that this industry is pretty much concentrated down here. And I guess I'm trying to figure out how much of that is recessionary, because we went through a really bad time, you know, in the fall of two thousand eight, the unemployment numbers just skyrocketed, and the industry lost a lot of jobs, you know, through two thousand nine. And the other, and I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know, the, I think Ontario and Quebec, they've lost a lot of jobs in manufacturing. And so this tax credit, they're trying to draw business in for sure. But it seems to me that this tax credit on their part is relatively new. And the seventeen point five in BC is kind of stale, it's kind of old. And there's a huge gap between seventeen point five and forty percent. So I'm just trying to figure out realistically So I'm just trying to figure out realistically how, in terms of period of time, are we talking about since two thousand nine, are we talking about in the last year? You know, that I, what I'm hearing is that the tax credit is the reason, but I, my sense of it, just doing analysis in the lower mainland, is that there are so many complicated issues and for, for a lot of citizens down here, its cost of living is huge, one of the most expensive metropolises in the world to live in. And, you know, it's a lot cheaper to live in Montreal, it's a lot cheaper to live, well, not so much cheaper in Toronto, but still less expensive. So, is that fair of me to ask this? It's kind of popping it out. The only other thing I wanted to ask is if the slide shows can we put up on the digital media site? We have a quick break.
Yep, certainly we can do that. Thanks very much for your question too. I, I, my own sense is that the migration that we're talking about, that part of the erosion of our community is probably within the last two years, I would say. And that's based on just a few companies that I know of and the people that I've spoken to. A classic example, for instance, is, is Rockstar Vancouver closes, but if you don't disclose, they say, I'm going to Montreal. All right? So that's very specific. On a thirty-eight hundred number, that's Howard and Digi having done a little bit of research on their own ad hoc and picking up the numbers from here and there and there of the various companies that said they might move to Vancouver, various publishers who said they would come here and instead locate it elsewhere. And we can only chalk that up to an economic benefit generated by the tax environment in that particular locale. But if you'd like to come up to me afterwards, I would show it, I'd be happy to give you my card and we can delve into that deeper, get into specific numbers.
Any stats on people leaving here and starting up companies in Montreal or in Toronto?
Unfortunately, no. Right? And the other, another, another no is how many are starting up here? There are so many that, and, and BCI and Digi are scrambling to try and find that out. One of the most rewarding things for me tonight will be the business cards in that jar because I'm going to hear about fifty companies I know in the U.S. is, I can almost guarantee you that. We need to get more data on that.
I think, I was just to add to that, I think it's fair to say there have been two waves, right? So the industry was absolutely affected by the recession and, you know, a good chunk of those jobs were lost in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, speaking for the year. But the issue is that they weren't hired back here, they were hired back elsewhere. And then we've had a, a second wave recently, you know, between propaganda, radical, you know, the long list, it's been in the media recently. And, I, I don't know, I, I think something's happened where kind of Montreal and some of the US states and other jurisdictions have reached critical mass and, you know, jobs have just started to be hired back elsewhere.
Okay, there you go.
So, my name is Sam Chenola, I'm a student at Vancouver First School. And I think we've got a lot of great insight as to, you know, what's probably our, in the general direction our industry should go in. But my question was to the panel, are there any specific action points that we all as individuals, all two hundred of us in this room and people who are outside because everybody's, this is folk, is there something that we as individuals can do to make sure that this issue is raised there and the government doesn't get to hear about it? Should we go on Twitter? Should we tag the government? Should we go on Facebook? Should we go, you know, go at class and go to the tour and just have a picnic in the lawn over here? Is there something that we as individuals, you know, who are passionate about this and want to work in the industry, can I do, can we have some concrete action principles?
Yeah, don't, don't move.
That, that for starters. I, I think we need everyone to step up, get passionate about these issues and participate, right? So, I think tonight's fantastic, I keep saying, I think this is the first step on a journey. And, you know, I think we need to do a better job, like you said, between both BC Interactive and the larger Digi BCI organization, in terms of figuring out coherent strategy, communicating that out to the group, getting buy-in, presenting back, you know, getting you guys to help us then message and communicate that back to everybody that's associated, any stakeholder with our industry. So, I think out, out of tonight, we've probably got a bunch of homework to do and then, you know, we owe it to come back to this group with recommended next, yeah.
We will, absolutely. Sorry to have been very patient, thank you.
Andre Minkov, I'm an operator. I see a big disconnect here between the community that by definition is disruptive, that by definition doesn't give a damn about the board, that by definition is about being grassroots, trying to find a solution, how to build the future by using the tools of, you know, they're a hundred years old, trying to lobby this idea, hoping that the government would somehow take money from one group of taxpayers and give it to the other group of taxpayers. It's not the solution, the government is not really going to do anything about it. And Julian was right that it's about finding other creative ways to get funding. It's a, really, I think that the, the time should not be wasted, wasted trying to convince, you know, some of our representatives to reconsider their strategies. It's about trying to build the market as if it already didn't exist. Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta agree with that. Just, you know, what you guys, I mean, Rick brought this up, it's about media and making noise. We've just gotta make some noise because we've been so quiet for so long. Even small companies go out there, blog about it, make some noise and just get noticed.
Well, and another point on that too, and I say this to all my independent studio friends, I've, I've gotten a lot of shit from publishers and PR people that work at publishers over the years because I know a lot of people personally and I said, well, I'll just take a TV crew and we'll, we'll go visit the team and we'll get some interviews about if their new game is coming out. They want the credit, they want to put their name above your game. They're paying for it, so in a way they have a right to do that. But they want to own the story on how this stuff comes out. So, you know, Slant Six is a perfect example, and I love Sony, this is not a slag against Sony, but they wanted to make sure that they were, the storytellers around it is SOCOM publicity. And I got reamed out when I said, well, I know Dan and Brian, let me just go down, go down there and do a cool story, we'll be seeing all of them play. And I was not allowed because we didn't have a Sony chaperone there to make sure that we got that stuff. And, and so, what I want to say to every independent studio out there is yes, know what the story is around your game. And know that the general public doesn't really need to know how programmers and artists work together and all of the intricacies of your business to build this game. It's like looking at a movie and, and, you know, sort of looking at it from the inverse on cinematography and, they want to know the story, they want to know the characters, they want to know the heart and the passion that built this thing. And I think the games industry in general, but certainly because so much great work comes out of this city, that's where the storytelling needs to kind of evolve and change. You guys need to be very good at connecting with an audience that doesn't really understand what you do. And that's a totally different thing. And that's why Sony and the other companies all want to police that because they have media training and they want to, they want to sort of get, you know, and, and make these things sold. But you guys have a responsibility for your own companies and your own brands and your own futures to also know how to express that in a general sense. And I think, take those opportunities as much as you can and fight for them. So, you know, in Slant Six's case, and, you know, and I know it's hard when somebody else is paying the bill, but in Slant Six's case, I think there should have been a, well, we, we have got to be able to drum up our own publicity around this game, how do we do this, how do we build this into the contract? Because I didn't see enough love for Slant Six when they had the, the SOCOM work. It was all just Sony, 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 and there was a lot of discussion about the previous Zipper guys, I guess, that were working on the game before. And I wanted to see more, more love and more attention around Slant Six.
That's a very good point, and we brought in our marketing and communications specialist in-house and she's been with us for a few short months. And what it's done for our company is just incredible, I can't understate the importance of it. More importantly though, we started to push the envelope and now we have to find publishers receptive, hey, we want to collaborate on the marketing, is that okay with you? And they're like, sure, can you come and speak to us?
Well, I'll tell you, that's BioWare's secret, you know? It's something I learned from Ray and Gray. One of my first trips out to Edmonton to go, like, this is a company that survived and flourished out of Edmonton. That's gotta be like a big ornament for that, right? But they were really, like, they were fighting with LucasArts in front of me when they were doing Kotor for how much BioWare love we were going to give them in the story. I've never witnessed anything like that, but that was a profound realization that these guys were in charge of their destiny. And they knew where they were seeing their company ten years down the road. And I think, you know, you have to think of yourselves as entertainment companies, you're not technology companies. This Digi BCI, you know, I don't mean the Disparates, the Moniker or any of that stuff, but don't fall under the umbrella of just tech. You guys make entertainment and own that.
What do you do on October twenty-fourth? You kind of swing by my office and be great?
Sure.
Two more, two more. You're going to be last tonight, right? Yes?
Okay, total link of E-Fun. The investment community needs to step up this game and support this gaming industry. Do you all agree with that?
Yep.
Right. Okay, so who are the investors? I echo Matt's question, where are the angel investors? I'll tell you, angel investors will only invest in things that they know about. They have a lot of confidence, they know what to look for, they know how to do the new deal, they put their money where they're about this. A part of the fun, E-Fun, E stands for entrepreneurs. It's a group of entrepreneurs that have thrown a little bit of money into the pot and yet also support each other. Friday, there was a biotech CEO who had thrown his lot in with the rest of us and now he's asking for money, he'll probably get it from the fund. Just six hours ago, another E-Fun shareholder from the software, middleware, network security industry, he threw his money into the fund and he's pitching to us to get some money. He'll probably get it. We're lacking investors, entrepreneurs from the gaming industry, from the digital media industry, from wireless. If they were in our fund, you better believe we would invest in because this is what we depend on. We depend on a brain power of people who know the industry who could say, this is a good investment. The rest of you, you biotech guy, you software middleware guy, come invest with me and we will. So, I echo the question again, where are the angel investors for this community?
I just think it was Taozao and I think it was Victor, Victor, eh?
Andre.
Andre, nevermind. Both of those. So, you know, but the, yes, the angel investor is important and there's definitely not enough in the gaming space, but the gaming space is incredible because I, I know from going through Grow Lab Accelerator and knowing a bunch of entrepreneurs in the space is that traction is harder to get from, as far as the gaming industry is concerned because it's more like hit and miss than, than like to build a business model around your product. So, it's, um, I, I think the angel investor that does the due diligence, it's almost like they have to take a little bit of a gamble, a little bit of a big bet in that, yes, you know, your fund is probably one distraction, one coming at later stage, but the gaming industry, the independent games, game developers don't really work that, we need you to leave a little bit before.
Right.
And I'll do the due diligence for you. The, the other thing is, I really do think in terms of the ecosystem in Vancouver, there are a lot of young, scrappy startups, just, you know, just looking at the panel here and, and the, the audience. And yes, our number one goal is to get profitability and, you know, for us personally, we're, we're going to be able to cover our burn in about three or four months, assuming the projection is right. And we have never taken any of the tax credits or anything like that from the government. So, I mean, that is doable, but like I said, there's a lot of, a lot of luck involved and a lot of hit and miss kind of gains in, in this industry. So, you know, for us, it is still that, that initial seed capital and I think that is what will change the, the community, I guess.
Thank you very much for that. Anybody else on the panel? Okay, last question, your privilege, Adam.
Hello? I speak for console and AAA and I, I, I don't work in social, but the problem in the industry is that we have viewed ourselves as a sweatshop service industry for twenty-five years. That worked because a million dollar was worth a dollar forty ten years ago. And to me, the tax credit thing feels like we're trying to patch that model. Twenty years of game development in this city, there is no id, there is no valve, there is no BioWare, there is no single company in this room that is living, offering AAA, independently owned, in-house developed IP that you own. Even the mothership is actually just a big pond off of another mothership. And that's our fault, that's our fault. When, when it was, it was cheap and it was great and we all had jobs and everything was great, but we don't own anything and that's why it's going somewhere else. Okay? Move it out. Clear.
Can you speak to that?
Sure, go ahead.
So, I agree with you and I think that's one of the really exciting things that's happening right now in the city is a lot of the small startups own their own IP. I mean, that's the whole deal, right? We own our IP, you know? And I think that's incredibly exciting and, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, the change has been really hard on a lot of people, I feel that. I, I know people are suffering, I'm not trying to put a Pollyanna spin on this, but there also is a positive side. And the positive side is that we're seeing emerging markets and we're seeing people gaming who've never gamed for it. And we're seeing opportunities to build games that have never been built. And, you know, the barriers to get to market are a lot smaller. And I respect your comments about the government, but you also have the choice to get assistance, which by the way, we pay back. There are ways to own your own IP, to bring it to market and to be successful. And I think Vancouver's really well positioned to make that work. And if we're able to, if we build the quality games that everyone in this room knows how to build, we can be successful doing this and we can become our own investors, right? I mean, you know how this happens, we build quality games, we have some hits, you know, the studios get bought up and we become the investors. That is a completely possible model that lies in front of us right now.
Yes.
So, I come back to my analogy, I think we've now heard substantively that there are some of those elements of the perfect storm. I was on Sand Hill Road about eighteen, twenty months ago and, and it was a really interesting comment that came back from a, a VC who had worked in our industry, so he had his chops. And that guy was excited, he was crazy excited because he could see this wave coming. And he said, some are going to die and some are going to adapt and make it. And he said, if you just poke your head up and, and stay above it all and see the big picture, you can capture opportunities. And this stuff only happens about every ten or fifteen years within any industry. So, we're, we're in the midst of a huge change, it's now up to us to be agile and adapt to it. And I sincerely believe that. I think, I hope you guys are all as passionate about our local industry as I am. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight, I'm pleased that we ended on this positive note, that was my intention. We're not over, we're not done yet. I think there's room for more town hall meetings. If we were to have more, would you be interested?
Yeah.
And Jonathan, to all of the studios, we've got some homework to do here and it's up to us now to reach out to you guys and to formulate some plans and, and tell, tell you in better, better articulate what our ideas will be for going forward. So, please allow us to do that, I don't think it'll take very long. And please be receptive to our messages, we want to hear back from you as well. So, I'd like to thank all the members of our panel. Thank you. I've got a one-time hero here, Whitney Carroy, who helped put all of the businesses together. Thank you, thank you all, thanks so much. Okay, pick your own better song.
And thanks to Lance and Mick as well.
That's my favorite. Thank you. I'm going to send this over to you guys. I think it was wrong.
Thanks to Village Gamer too.
Hi guys, I think you guys have been sitting for a really long time, I feel like some of you guys might want to get up and talk. We've decided that maybe you guys object to this, we like, we do just a Twitter. If you guys tweet BC Game Industry, we can do a Twitter draw for some prizes. If you guys want to get up and network and, you know, eat something, drink something? Let's get up and do that then. Thank you so much.